Pure torture and stuff.
Will you not want to take my money, will you, buddy? Lord, let's not. Let me scoot up so I can tell him that he knocked me down. That's what I'm saying, don't be talking like that. Are you playing them still?
Or you still want to go over and hand say some more good folks?
Willie? Your shoebox way, hang on, give it, buddy. Sitting there in the bottom of your yard. Yes, she had.
That little daddy. He used it for storage. And so we finally pointed out, and I won't read it, but I think I needed camouflage. He was fleeing.
I took the car, David, it's in shade now.
Absolutely.
Hard luck.
There's no retired.
This session will now be in order. Let's all stand. Turn face flag, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Pastor Carter would need someone to pray for us?
Straight up Pastor of Purdy Temple Church.
Good evening. Got a little short story I'd like to read for you this morning before we pray. And this was September 7th, 1774. The first prayer of the Continental Congress. Amid fear and writhing tension delegates from across the colonies arrived in Philadelphia on September 4th, 1774, to convene the first Continental Congress. Before taxing the weight issues of the day, they acted on a motion by Thomas Cushing from Massachusetts to begin their business with prayer. Some opposed the motion because of the diversity of the denominations represented by the delegates. But Samuel Adams, the firebrand of the revolution and a devout member of the Continental Church, rose and asserted that he was no bigot and could hear a prayer from any gentleman of anybody or virtue who was at the same time a friend to his country. Adams nominated a local angelic pastor, David Duke, to lead in prayer, and the delegations agreed. About the same time, a rumor swept through Philadelphia, which later proved untrue that Boston was being shelled by British cannons. So the next morning, when the delegates assembled in Carpenter's Hall for the agreed-upon prayer, they were tense and confused. In that room, there were such icons as George Washington, John Adams, Samuel Adams, John Hancock, and Patrick Henry. Duke opened his angelic and prayer book to the prescribed reading for the day, and the delegates instantly sensed the selection of scripture was providential. Psalms 35. "Plead my cause, O Lord, with those who strive against me; fight against those who fight against me. Let those be put to shame and brought to dishonor who seek after my life; let those be turned back and brought to confusion who plot my hurt." And this was his prayer. "O Lord, our heavenly Father, high and mighty, King of kings and Lord of lords, who doest from thy throne behold all the dwellers on earth, and reigneth with power and supreme and uncontrolled over all the kingdoms, empires, and governments; look down in mercy, we beseech thee, on thee, our American states, who have fled to thee from the rod of the oppressor and thrown themselves on thy gracious protection, desiring to be henceforth dependent only on thee. Be thou present, O God of wisdom, and direct the council of this honorable assembly; enable them to settle things on the best ensures foundation, that the sin of blood may be speedily clothed, that order, harmony, and peace may effectually be restored; and truth and justice, religion, and piety prevail and flourish amongst the people; preserve the health of their bodies and the vigor of their minds; share down on them and the millions they represent. Such temporal blessings dost thou seest expedient for them in this world, and crown them with everlasting glory in the world to come. All this we ask in the name and through the merits of our Savior Jesus Christ, thy Son." Father God, Kevin, Lord, if we stand here before you today in the presence of these delegates, these town councils, Lord, we just pray, Father God, that you open their hearts and minds too, Lord, to your word, Lord, that they want to lead according to your righteousness, Lord, for the bettering of the town, for the bettering of the people. And we pray, Father God, for people present, Lord, that are here. We just pray, Father God, that they give these people honor that do their position, Lord. You place people in their positions, Lord, to lead and direct, Lord. And we just pray, Father God, that they want to do that in your righteousness, Lord. So, Father God, we pray all things be done to your glory, and we ask these things in Jesus' name, and amen.
Thanks very much. May we see it? Can we please have a roll call of council?
Call Thor.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mullins, here.
Towers.
Here.
Thank you. Next item, first item that we're going to be looking at is consent calendar. Can we have the approval of the agenda or any additions?
So I think it's up to the council whether or not they want to go in a closed session. My legal rights on that would be that there aren't really any exemptions that allow us to do so. Mostly because the SMRs and the industry has already made an announcement of their exemption. The exact exemption of the discussion or decision that the business or industry, the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcements have been made or business or industries interested in okaying or expanding these facilities.
I'm willing to take a chance if you are.
Subjective debate, I mean, it's y'all's choice.
As far as wanting to close session on it?
If you feel like there's information to learn.
Yeah, absolutely, but is there anything we need to adjust on our agenda?
If you want to, yes, we need to add in. If we want to do it in a closed session at the end, we can just add. I'll write it down here.
Just put 17B?
Yeah, 17B would be fine in a closed session pursuant to 2-3711. That would be A5.
A5?
I guess that would negate number 13.
It would. Do you want to write it down for me or mine since I'm most likely to do that?
No, it might because you give this to me.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Should we make the motion?
Okay. All right, so I would make the motion to approve the consent calendar with the addition under 17B, 2.2-3711, A5?
Strike from 13.
Strike from 13.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Do you have a second to the motion as amended? The motion? Can we roll call that, please?
Call Thor.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Towers.
Yes.
And the consent calendar is approved. Next item on the agenda is audience comments. Anyone from the audience like to give up, come up here and give a comment? Now's a good opportunity. If there is no one, we will move on to item number six. Would the police department like to give a report?
How are you doing this evening?
Hello, Chief.
All right.
We got to go over here and piece of paper in this one. She pretty much business as usual for us. I think last month I told you all about the Digi ticket. We met, had several meetings, and got that project underway. I think the project's been paid for and we'll seek reimbursement soon for that. That'd be $75, should reimbursement taken. I mentioned the body cams and in-car camera systems, you all. We finally negotiated that contract through, and we'll be seeing those hopefully to get that rolling as well soon. Just want to take an opportunity to brag on these guys a little bit. Our nice guy has been out located, equal to from around, for some reason we're starting to see an opportunity again in homeless population. And he's been able to recover several things, probably on the other end of town near 23, near the clinic. Pretty good observation skills and prevented some things from happening and was able to protect some other things fairly early after they occurred, which made it easier for us to take care of and make everybody happy. Officer Burke over here, just asleep, covered a lot of stolen property that was taken from, we know at least, the city of Norton, maybe some businesses in Wise County. And it was due to his being out in the community and was talking to people and established some relationships, he was able to find that and recover quite a bit of stolen property. So just wanted to give him some recognition, and they're both just really doing a good job in what we've asked them to do, and think that their efforts in traffic enforcement has made the roads here a little bit safer. So if you guys, I know that there was some concern on that end, that's something I'm getting very impressed here in a minute, with some speeds. Y'all have mentioned something about some speeds prior, prior council meeting. I don't know why up here, when you come in off of 23 on the north end of town, there's just a short distance that the speed zone is 40. And then it drops back to 30. It's not much of a distance at all.
Are you talking about the end for Brock scenes?
No, opposite end.
Okay.
So if you're coming into town, to me, it makes little sense for it to be 10 more. And it makes less sense for it to be 10 more going out of town because you got a stop sign approaching pretty quick. So if the council want to take up a measure to maybe make that consistently, I think it's 30, that would help with enhancing highway safety because if we've got a car stationed at the clinic, run radar. And you know, we've had several accidents up there. We had a car last year, I think it wound up being a medical condition that caused the guy to wreck, but at any rate, it was a fail. And the person gets a utility pole up there in the parking lot at this clinic. If they're running radar coming southbound into town, what they're having before right hand was a 40 mile an hour speed zone. It would change precisely where they would be sitting. But that's not doing any good as far as enforcement activity because if we had a 30 mile an hour speed zone consistently, people would be able to have their speed adjusted before it comes to the curve, which could potentially eliminate some serious crashes there. So that's, it makes better sense to have a higher speed zone on south end of town than it does the north end of town. And that one is so small, I don't know why that decision was ever made, but I think that my recommendation to the council would be to take, make a measure to change it to 30 all the way through from the north end of town and just keep everything else the same. You all can take that up amongst yourselves however you want to do it, but that would just help us. And I do have some concern down at the, they tell me it used to be an old bar, I don't know, y'all give me.
Go.
Okay, do have some concern there, we had an accident, I think it was last year. Actually had two accidents. One, the guy overturned his vehicle in the creek, and his dog was ejected, killed his dog. And then right before that, we had another collision where someone had been up all night long and fell asleep at the wheel, and we had a head-on collision down there. Speed was a bit of a factor in the crash, but more the injury aspect of it. So I can work with what we've got down there as far as trying to reduce the accidents, but it's a little more difficult on the north end, if that makes any sense, y'all, based on the speed, the speed zones.
So I have a question, a stupid question. Do we set that or does VDOT set that?
No, I think you have the ability to set that.
Because I was thinking when we talked to VDOT about lowering it on this end of town, it was pretty much a go-town sand.
I think that on that, I may be wrong, and I don't know who talked to VDOT, okay? But I think the problem down there was that the speed zone is established before you enter the town limits. That's what I think the problem was. If it had changed, you know, right there at the town limits, I think you all have the authority to make a call on that. I may be totally wrong.
So yeah, VDOT and the Commission of Highway Number 46.2 sets it outside of those. Inside of town limits, you all may be able to adopt an ordinance.
So.
That's.
But if you're saying, like you're saying, if you're setting it as being limited kind of on the border or outside, then that's going to obviously go into jurisdiction.
What I would like to see is to chalk it up to, my son had a wreck down there on the south side. He was coming out of our road and someone probably on, but then he got the fault because of the way it hit. But I think it'd be nice, you see some of these towns have a sign that says 30 miles per hour throughout the town limits unless otherwise posted.
Right.
And I'd like to see it from one end to the other, inside the town limits.
Mr. Dawson, do you know, I know the code addresses and I know it applies to cities, I don't know if it applies to towns. If there's not a posted speed zone that is established at a maximum speed, I think on a residential, it would be 25. I think the code specifies that.
That sounds correct, but I don't, it's probably in the Article 8 I'm looking at here, which is the maximum speed limit on rusted roads, non-surfaced street and highways. There's code sections for all of those zones, maximum speed limit on certain roads. So I believe that is correct.
And my contention would be that that wouldn't, in my mind, it's up to you all to discuss and figure out how you can do it. In my mind, that doesn't meet the requirement for a residential zone, even though there's several houses there. And I think it would cause more problems if we went down to 25 than it would good. I think 35 is a reasonable speed.
35?
30 or whatever, 30 or, if we got 30 now, that's what we need to stick with.
I could be giving it back.
I don't think we need to go down to 25, but I think 40 and any stretch there is pushing. I don't think that, I just don't think that's good.
And there's a little history on this. Councilman Pelfrey wanted to have ATVs be able to travel on our roads, and it had to be 25 in order for them to travel on roads. But that's, you know, years ago, but he never could get that done. But maybe something, the law, maybe our attorney can look into it for next month.
I'm pretty sure the reason he could not get that done is for the ATVs, there is some sort of requirement with regard to a trailhead.
Oh, okay.
And we don't meet the requirements for the trailhead.
Did you maybe look into that for next month? Put it on the agenda?
If we can get it consistently, it sounded like maybe 30 at least in the town limits on that drag from one end to the other.
I would say all over.
That would make it.
I'm good with all over.
That's up to you all. The one place that I've seen that's prone to accidents and for bad things to happen is that, and on either end, for some reason, it's never in the middle, it's just on either end. Thank goodness that there's not people, most people have enough sense. When you go by a lot by the pound, they know people's going to be out there walking around, and they're pretty much, some will be hating. But you get down here on the other end of town, near that golden pine, I mean, it's just, it's a free-for-all. You never know what you want to get.
They're dragging on that.
Unfortunately, we don't have enough people to sit down there all the time, but they're definitely moving on. I noticed that thing when I was coming in here, that got brought to my mind, and I was like, well, I know that we had some discussion about that before. I think we probably need to, you know, do something to, at least not let it be going 40. So, but other than that, that's all I have for you guys. Everything else is business as usual.
Kind of related to the homeless, have you still doing the checkups on the marijuana shops?
Yes.
Okay, still keeping tabs on that. And the skill games place, make sure they don't have any coin or hard machines?
I think we've got one machine that's out of service, it's questionable right now. But unless there's some new court case, I didn't even know that there was one. If that was King and Queen County or we here anywhere.
Not that I'm aware of, but still, for debate as to how the machine operates. And judge to judge, honestly, as I understand it.
So if they have one machine that doesn't meet qualifications, is that a reason to shut the whole operation down?
I mean, I really think that that's really at the discretion of all of us here. You know, it's something that kind of goes above a local police department's role.
When I say that, just to be clear, when I say that, that's not, they're not operating the machine. They have been honest and said, hey, this thing's out of compliance and pulled the plug. They possess it, but it's not operational, which is not illegal to possess it, they just can't operate it. So they've at least been decent enough to, you know, to do that.
So if someone went in and took a picture of it in operation, you could shut them down?
No, that's like he said, that's up to Commonwealth's attorney, and I think Commonwealth's attorney right now has figured this problem. But yeah, I don't think it's going to happen. For showing an effort to try to comply here. I haven't been in, any place I've been, I haven't gone in and called them doing something that they haven't told me that. If they've told me that they're going to do something so far, then it may change. They may, if they don't honor it, now by all means, if I go in and see a machine that we discussed previously, if it's on and operating, and I'm going to go ahead and sign it, and let the Commonwealth's attorney make the determination what they want to do with it, I mean, that's the purpose of what y'all have me doing. So I haven't found them to be dishonest in what they, in my interactions, whether that makes any sense to you. So that's what that is. Anything else? Now, did it, off the hook?
All right.
Thank you, y'all, I appreciate it.
So if you'll check on that, Kevin, and if you can put that on the agenda next time, if you can put that on the agenda. Put that on the agenda next time, that's Alan's speed limit.
Yeah, I got it.
I'll make a note of it, sure as well.
Okay, so fire department have a report to give? Town manager, can the town manager please give a report?
The manager is in Richmond for the VDOT training, and she did include her report in written form.
Any progress on the fire department coming in independent entity or?
I don't know anything more than you did.
Well, there is the town manager's report, if you have any comments about it. If you have any comments, we will just bring them up and we'll discuss them. The next is EDA, does EDA have a report?
We have furnished three rooms in the Lloyd House. We do have someone staying a few nights during the week. We got one that's planning on staying the weekend, hopefully. We're trying to, we're trying to get a little bit of money. Because we are down, in my, in my records, we got $215, and we still got to make a payment to the, oh, what is it? The exterminator. Exterminator, we owe them another hundred and some dollars. So we're, and we hope there've been a lot of donations, I've come out and bought stuff and donated it and put stuff in, like bedding and Libra's loaned us some money to buy water heater. No, furniture. Furniture, that's right.
Don't have the water heater on here.
Okay, we got the water heater, we paid that out of the year. So it's getting tough, but like I said, I have donated everything, all the beddings for the beds. We purchased the furniture, but there is a contractor that's going to be in the area. Did you say after the first of the year? After the first of the year, it'll be after the first of the year. Trying to limp things along and get some people in there for short stays in between now and then, which will bring in several thousand dollars with that contractor. Right. Because they want to go ahead and rent out two rooms, that way they don't have to worry about going to another community for a hotel. So it will put the EDA Woodhouse back on the map, it will be, yes.
If the power can stay on until then?
Yeah, if anyone wants to donate any, we can take donations if you want to. Donations are accepted. Well, we've worked hard and cleaned hard, and like I said, we've both donated a lot of stuff, a lot of time, and, you know. Well, one of the things is getting it registered as an Airbnb so that we can pull people in here because we know people are living in that area, or going to this weekend is pretty positive. People are looking for a place to stay here locally. So we can get it registered and get it started, and then we can hopefully bring in some money and keep it updated. Do a lot of more updates to it. I say we, I'm just technical. Yeah, you just, a go-to where I say is, is it? We got that, but yes, but we do convert the town and everything, and like I said, we do have a few people we owe, we have to pay. So as of right now, it's all donated or loaned or whatever, but anyway, we look forward to getting out of that, paying all this off. But everything's paid up, the electric bill and the water bill so far is paid up to date. So we're good.
Okay, would the planning commission give a report?
We didn't get to make, kind of few of them, we're going to make next week.
Sounds good. Okay, well, we move on to old business. Is there audit update?
So the audit, pre-audit should be done by the end of this month, and then it will be a matter of getting in line with the Abari and Associates to get the actual audit.
And who was that?
The pre-audit.
No, the audit, the audit.
That's, I think it's Abari and Associates, it was one of the companies that we found, the one in Texas, I believe.
Texas.
Okay, we've done some researches and asked some questions of others as to whether they would be concerned with a remote audit, and from what we're being told, that's pretty much standard nowadays, and it's going to reduce our costs greatly by doing that. And out of the three that we looked at, that one was, that one was the best one.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Can we move on to grant update? Any updates on the grants?
Grants are what the grants are. I know Brittany has reached out to ARC to see if we can include miracles wages. Grants are what the grants are. Um, I know Brittany has reached out to Arc to see if we can include miracles wages while Abby is gone. And she has not heard back from them with regard to the monuments grant. Um, we're moving right along with that. We have, I have the ambulance done in March and right now, the. I, I kinda feel like the contractor is trying to punish us because we did not authorize them, authorize an additional fee for a process. Or they wanted to bring in here to remove the bank vault. They did what the job was upfront. Um, it was almost four thousand dollars difference. And so they're saying October, November before they can get that done, but we are looking at some other options. We are still looking for a contractor that can build the amphitheater and work with the artists for the monument. Um, I did reach out to VDM today with regards to the slide and haven't got, got a response yet. We have gone through EHP, which is the historical portion of it and, um, that's been approved. So we're really just waiting on FEMA. Trying to go through my head with the grants. Uh, Kristen's police grant is, is approved, so we're waiting on that and that has to be paid out by the end of the month and then us get reimbursed for that. Um, the DEQ grant is basically what's paying for the demolition. Um, so just waiting on that to finish and that's all I can think of right now.
Well, there's the outdoor grant, we need to help.
Um, I have sent them the information that was provided by the commissioner of revenue and we will be returning the money to them. We have not bought the piece of equipment yet, but we do have a quote on it and kind of. Kind of negotiated a little bit better deal.
Right.
With them, um, so that's where we're at right now.
With the outdoor, so the outdoor grant is not gonna be available for that?
For the equipment.
Yeah.
It will. But there will be a portion of the money that has to be returned to VOF. So we will return, return the portion that we're required to return. However, the remaining amount is what will be used for the equipment.
Will that cover? No.
It will.
Okay.
And we've worked out a nice enough deal to where, um, if we get the grant from, um, Versa. That it will leave enough to cover so that the lift, what am I, what am I trying to say?
Oh, the, the bucket.
The bucket lift, thank you. The bucket lift, um, so where we found that out at for such a good price is overseas. And it will cost us about four thousand as opposed to two, but a good majority of that is, um, shipping. But with what's left over in VOF and the Versa, then it will cover it.
That's all. Okay. The pocket park and slide update, you kind of covered that already. Any more comments on that?
So the slide's still waiting on the, uh.
Still waiting on FEMA.
The audits?
No, no, pocket park is waiting on the audits. That's the Amler grant, so that's the one I left out. Um, Amler is waiting on the audits. They could actually go ahead and do the retaining wall and the slope stabilization, the remaining slope stabilization. Once FEMA signs off on the plan. So we've passed everything that FEMA signed off on. That's what I'm waiting to hear from now. People think these things happen overnight. We spend a lot of time helping a lot of people to try and get them to do what we need them to do.
So the pocket park and the slide. You're saying retaining wall, that'd be part of the slide, correct?
The retaining wall, so where the shock creek is up there now, the retaining wall would cover that. But there's also from the plan, there is a build out to bring that roadway back to what it was before the slide occurred.
Mm-hmm.
That's VDM.
Which is what is waiting on FEMA.
Yeah. And Amler's waiting on the audits.
Okay. And next item, item number ten, boundary adjustment. Any comments? What do you think?
The board of supervisors gonna have a vote, I mean, a hold a public hearing on that or? I guess we have Mr. Hatfield here.
Yeah.
So our boundary adjustment for pound, uh, taking in both of the school properties, is that on the horizon agenda for the?
It is not currently, but it can. It can be.
Okay, you can make the motion, Randy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, let's get it down. We'll get that out there.
Okay, make the motion and see what happens.
Okay.
And just like, uh, reiterated that to, um, county attorney Mullins and she said she would get with the chair then.
Okay.
Kind of magistrate, so.
It works. Okay. And, um, item number eleven, newly acquired building?
So the survey has been done on the building, um, and that's part of that demolition that we're waiting on. The survey has been done. Kevin has the platte as well as the marker information to do the deed. And the buyer will be back in town and provide us some money for that at the end of this month.
So we had two buyers and now it's down to one?
The first buyer made the commitment before we bought the building.
Mm-hmm.
He has first option. That's only right.
So.
So as far as the timeline goes for this, the public hearing will need to hold before we actually convey it, um, with that.
Do we have to have a public hearing to sell the property?
Yeah.
Then I would say.
Next month.
Well, he's gonna bring us money and we're gonna be ready with the deed at the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah.
Then how long do we have to advertise to?
To take.
Then I say we get that in and, and recess our meeting so that we can get it sold.
Okay, yeah, cause once, once that's heard and then approved, that gives the council.
Our authority meeting is a week earlier, so I'd say just have it at the October meeting. I mean, two weeks compared to six months is not gonna be a big deal.
I mean, that, that, you know.
I think the motion, we have a public hearing on the sale of that property. On the, was it fourteenth, October fourteenth?
Yeah, yeah, fourteen.
If you, if you've got it down before then, Kevin, go ahead and send it to me.
Okay.
And I'll go ahead and send it to the paper.
So that's the motion, hold a public hearing on the fourteenth, October.
Do we have a motion? Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there is none opposed, the motion passes. The motion passes. Okay, so no more discussion on the building. Uh, we will go to item number twelve, Red Fox Festival.
Do prepare. You do have a leaflet in here for the Red Fox Festival. Please note that Labor in Motion, even which is the monument, is highlighted in the Red Fox Storytelling Festival. In addition to, um, money from the Labor in Motion Grant funded by Mellon Foundation. Um, there is also a Virginia Humanities Grant that the Tourism Committee got to put all this in on. Um, lots of wonderful things happening. The stories will be centered around labor stories to kind of go in line with the Labor in Motion Monument. Um, and not even though why, we have some good food options coming. Um, the barbecue place Bonafide, Bonafide Barbecue will be here and the mini pancakes in the city will be here. So.
Sounds good. Is there any more discussion on the Red Fox Festival? There is none. We will move on to new business. Item number fourteen, conflict of interest.
So I've struggled with how to address this. We all had the conflict of interest training that Kevin provided. However, recently, um, one of our police officers came in and says, so this person stopped me and said, I don't want somebody up here all the time. I'm a taxpaying citizen. Libran's got a problem with it. Tell her to come up here and have her come to Jesus meeting with me. So, right off the bat, what I advised him to do was contact, um, the chief of police. Because I don't tell the police officers what to do. You know, we work together well here within this group and I, I think, I think you need to realize that if you are making a request as a taxpaying citizen, you have to understand that there are other taxpaying citizens in the town. If you want somebody that's gonna hold your hand twenty-four seven, you might wanna hire a bodyguard. With regard to, if you're asking for that for your employer, then your employer needs to come and do a contract with the town. If your employer wants somebody up there twenty-four seven to watch their equipment, what's happening, then that's fine and dandy. But they need to pay for that officer to be there twenty-four seven. Town shouldn't bear the burden of somebody sitting there twenty-four seven. We can't have a police officer in one place all the time. It's just not, it's not feasible and, you know, there are other things going on. So I think if you have questions with regard to the conflict of interest, I'm sure Kevin would be happy to answer those.
So you're very nebulous. And how, I mean, a citizen asks for the police.
No, Mr. Hall asked the police officer to come here and tell me they wanted somebody up there all the time.
No, that's not what I said. All we wanted, somebody to come up there every so often and watch that traffic coming through.
Okay, but why send them to me to say if Libran's got a problem with it, tell her to come up here and we'll have her come to Jesus meeting? Libran doesn't instruct the police officers. I stay in my lane. But if you're asking as a taxpaying citizen, they can't be with every taxpayer all the time. In turn, if you're asking on behalf of your employer, you've crossed the line into conflict of interest. Because you're trying to use your council seat to leverage for something you want. So I was, I was trying to be very even keel and not call anybody out, but that's, that was where it's at.
Well, I was just trying to keep the guys from getting killed. I mean, they come through there. We were talking about Speedlin a while ago, coming in and out of town. You want to see them coming in from there.
I get it, but if you want somebody up there all the time, then they need to come and.
No, I, you know, this is what I decided. We'll not do anything. We'll let them come through there. And there's, break this feeling, there's nothing I can do about it.
Well, I'm, I'm aware that he's been up there pretty constantly.
And you know what they do? He can park up there and they'll flash their lights at the other drivers. Next thing you know, they come through there just slow as they can do. I mean, I can't. I said right then, I said, we might as well forget about copying up there.
There is a, you know, there's some.
And he's got, we've got cameras up there now, so we don't need the police.
There are some work zones in some places where there isn't a police there, but they have a car with flashing lights. You know, maybe, uh, that would be something, you know, because this is a public road and there is public safety involved. Now, maybe, I mean, when I walked up tonight, there's a car out there running, you know, like Greg Whitaker talked about the other week. You know, you could just, might as well run it up there as to run it here at town hall.
Are they willing to pay, are they willing to pay for the cost of it sitting up there running?
Well, yes, you don't have to be running. It could be setting.
What the council.
You don't have to have something if there's lots wrong, otherwise it's.
You just have a cop up there, just a cop car. I've even thought about, uh, making a big, uh, model of a piece of cardboard. I mean, anything that's gonna happen, but I'm telling you, they come through there and I have to absolutely step out in front of them to keep them from. I mean, absolutely about fifty mile an hour and it's a, what, forty-five mile an hour?
So are you.
And it's supposed to be ten, five to ten mile an hour or less than what it is.
So are you concerned primarily about your personal safety?
Not man, I don't care about that.
Or are you concerned about the public safety of people breaking the law and therefore getting hurt?
No, I'm afraid they're gonna hit one of our guys or pull out in front of one of them pieces quick.
Mr. Copeland, in the grand scheme of things, him trying to leverage his council position to get what he wants is still a conflict of interest. That is my point.
Well, I mean, prosecutor, it's your law, you're prosecutor. I mean, this is just silly. I mean, he can, any, any citizen could ask.
It's not silly. I have extended an olive branch to try and keep it up in line of communication with you all and was beat to death with that olive branch. So if you all wanna know, well, I, I'm not gonna go into it in the middle of a comp, council meeting.
You don't have anything to go into.
Yeah, well, okay.
I mean, so, so, okay, so.
That's your opinion.
I asked the mayor.
But it is still a conflict of interest to try and leverage his position to get what he wants.
I asked the mayor. No, I have. I don't want to do that. I didn't intend to do that.
Mr. Hall, I understand that you don't always understand.
Well, I'm learning. I've just been to six meetings already and I'm trying to learn this stuff.
Well, this is September, so this is your month.
So, okay, so here's, here's the thing that bothers me about this, and it has nothing to do with Gary. What bothers me is that I asked the mayor, what is conflict of interest on the agenda? The mayor contacts the town manager. She claims not to know what it is on the agenda. She says a council member put it on the agenda. She wouldn't even tell him what council member put it on the agenda. Well, there's only one person other than us that puts things on the agenda and that's you. So he wrote to you and said, why is not conflict of interest on the agenda? She said, well, you'll find out when any other council member finds out.
That's not what I said.
I'll read it, I'll read it.
Okay, he's gonna read it. He's gonna read it. He's gonna read it.
It was, it was said, okay, I'll just read mine too. I'll read mine. Um, I said, could you let me know what item conflict of interest is about? I said, thank you, John. And she says, John, I will happily enlighten everyone at the meeting. And it was, it was said in such a way that was like, I don't wanna tell you because I wanna surprise you at the meeting.
Listen, you all have painted a target on my back. Every.
I just wanted to know.
I guarantee you, the fact that I'm bringing up a conflict of interest will not make your YouTube little short snappy titles. And to say that you have not targeted me is a flat out lie. I have extended an olive branch. I have tried to get along. I've tried to make communication, but it, it's been smashed back in my face. So, you know, I, I'll put what I need to on the agenda, just like you all do, and we'll discuss it when we get there.
Okay, so what's for instance?
You're, you're trying to deflect from the fact that what he did is a conflict of interest. This is a tale of caution.
So.
At this point. It is a tale of caution.
Okay, attorney, it's a conflict of interest for someone working on a public road project to request that a police officer be there to maintain law and order.
Not per se, no.
No, it isn't.
Not per se.
But when they say, I'm a taxpaying citizen and this is what I want.
Taxpaying citizens deserve their rights.
When they're doing it on their employer's time, on behalf of their employer. He didn't say, I want somebody to come up here and watch my stuff.
Cause to illustrate the difference in this and per se conflict of interest is if there was a contract for Gary's employer to do something for the town and Gary votes, yeah. You'd have to abstain from that. That's the per se conflict of interest where, you know, he can financially benefit from it or even more so if it was his contract. Now, I'm not gonna make any opinions as to whether this is politically appropriate or morally appropriate, but as far as conflict of interest goes. You know, I think that it doesn't fit neatly within the definition of conflict of interest as a top.
But that doesn't mean that it's not.
I mean, I don't really wanna make an opinion on Gary, you're not, I'm just saying that.
Legally, it's not conflict of interest. That's what you're saying. Legally, he's okay as a taxpayer. Ask that.
I mean, he, he can ask anybody to do anything for him, I think, in terms of when he's not on this council. Your concern stems from the fact that he's using his position to get undue influence out of a service that's paid for by the taxpayers.
So he was a council member looking out for the people's safety.
No, not the people's safety, he's looking out for contractor's safety, which he happens to work.
He was looking out for the workers' safety and the equipment that was pulling out in front of people in the work zone, which would be the drivers and the workers. I mean, he does work there, but he was looking for the safety of the people.
So, so let me give you an illustration, okay? So, last month, I put on the agenda marijuana shops, okay? And, uh, I got some calls over that. But anyway, uh, the police chief called me and wanted to say, "What's this on there for?" I didn't say, "Well, wait till the council meeting and you can find out with everybody else." I told him what it was on there for. And we clarified some things and we took it off the agenda. When we want clarification about something that's been put on the agenda, we ought to be willing to share it. And you weren't willing to share it, you wanted to surprise us with. I gotcha, I gotcha!
It wasn't about that, it was about the fact that, like I said, you've targeted me, I have tried to extend an olive branch.
Payback, payback.
No, I have tried to extend an olive branch to you and, and on two occasions, your comment was, "We'll just get rid of the police force, people will take up arms and protect themselves," on two occasions. So, no, if I'm extending an olive branch and you're wanting to beat me to death with it, no.
What olive branch are you talking about?
Well, I've tried to talk to you on a few occasions and it didn't turn out well, so I'm just.
No, you're the one left me when we talked about the, uh, you know, the disincorporation vote, but that's, you know, here and there. So, I think we've had enough discussion. So, I mean, it's both ways, this is politics. You oppose what I stand for, most of the time I oppose what you stand for. That's all it is.
It's not about politics. For me, it's about doing what's right for the town.
And a majority of people have to agree with you in next November.
Okay. Well, uh, next item on the agenda is other business. Is there any other business that we'd like to be discussed? If there is not, we will go into another public comment. Uh, period, does anybody want to get up and give a public comment? Anyone wanna give a public comment? Okay, if there is not. Uh, do we have a motion? Uh, we have closed session now. Go ahead. For the record, please state your name and whether you live in or out of town.
Danny Benover. Now, what else did you need?
Uh, whether you live in or out of the town.
Out of town.
Thank you.
Uh, as far as this conflict of interest thing, you work for a company that has got a contract to do that work up there. And why can't that company get them, somebody to control the traffic to there? Instead of requiring a police officer from the town to do it? I mean.
I plead fifth.
You plead fifth. Well, maybe you need.
Anything I do is not right here, that's the thing.
Maybe you need to talk to your boss about getting somebody up there to, to, uh, control that traffic.
We decided right now, like I said, we're just gonna let it go. And anybody that wrecks or causes an accident that works on them, they're in trouble.
So, so your company that you work for is not gonna control.
I'm not answering anything yet.
Well, okay.
It is a public road, to be fair. And so, he can't enforce public safety on a public road, that would be the law.
I'm not asking him to, I'm asking the people he worked for.
Right, they can't write tickets.
Okay. Why do you think they have flag men out when they're doing run work?
Well, they don't, they have flag poles. Go up and down. They don't.
So, you don't do flag persons anymore?
He doesn't.
I didn't ask him to, I said, "He needs to talk to his boss about it."
And I've heard of V-Dot flag people almost getting run over. People looking at their phones and stuff and whoop, stopping real quick.
Okay, people looking at their phones instead.
Yeah, that's, that's a ticketable offense.
Well.
You can't see them.
Do you want to be a policeman of the town?
No.
Why not?
Maybe they could deputize you, you could write the tickets.
But you ought to see the people that's on the town.
Let go of suit.
I understand, I understand that. People don't need their phones out in the, in the car.
That's right.
If they ain't got something to hold that phone for, then they ain't got no business with the phone app. I guess not three minutes to it.
You still got forty seconds.
I do.
It's going down low.
Well, let me see, what else can I store? Well, I, I just think you ought to leave, anybody on the council needs to work for the town. Not anybody else, the town, what's next for the town? Huh?
I ought to quit my job.
Well, you won't get paid anything for the town, cause ain't nobody on the council that gets paid for anything, no matter what time they put in here.
I think your comment, your time has expired. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else wanna give up? Get, come up here and give a public comment? Okay. We will now, uh, we can go to item number seventeen and seventeen B, which are both closed sessions. Do we have a motion?
I recommend a motion going to closed session pursuant to two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A and B of the Virginia Code for the Purpose of.
A eight.
A eight.
Sorry.
That looks like a B count. A eight. Um, of the Virginia Code for the Purposes of Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Specific Legal Matters Requiring the Provision of Legal Advice from Such Counsel. And two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A five For the Purpose of Discussion Concerning a Perspective Industry Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made Of the Industry's Interest in Locating Its Facility in the Community.
A second.
Do we have a second? Do we have, do we have a roll call vote?
Callthorne.
Yes.
Paul. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And we are dismissed into. You're dismissed into.
Would it be possible to just dismiss everybody and just say, "I've been here," or is that?
I mean, I think it'd be more appropriate just to go into the chamber.
Okay, that's good. Yep, like I need people, wait up.
There's a reason that was done.
How you doing, bud?
Uh, that's if we get in trouble, right, Randy?
Hey, come this way, help me. I know it, yeah.
How many months or years should I go up there on that road and highway?
Do we, can I have a motion to bring us back into order? Do we have a motion to come back into radio session? So, do we have a second, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Callthorne.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Just figure it twice, sorry. Okay? Can I have a motion to certify that only lawfully exempt matters were discussed? And those matters being closed session pursuant to two dot two dash three seven one one A eight of the Virginia Code for the Purposes of Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Specific Legal Matters Requiring the Provision of Legal Advice by Such Counsel. And closed session pursuant to two dot two dash three seven one one A five For the Purpose of Discussion Concerning a Perspective Industry Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made Of the Industry's Interest in Locating Its Facilities in the Community.
Salute.
Do we have a second?
A second, I think.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have a roll call vote of that, please?
Callthorne.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yeah.
And the motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Do we get to say anything about our closed session? We had any actions?
So, do we have no actions that are in the rule? Is there an action that you wanted to make?
I just wanted to, uh, I don't think this is disclosing anything, but I think the, uh, the winds are at the back of people who want the SMRs. And unless there's some major changes politically in Wise County, it looks like in ten years, we could have some here or so. That's all I wanna say.
Anything else?
Here as in a pound?
I mean, in the county, in the county.
Okay.
There's not enough.
Clarify.
Not enough land available here.
The good one.
There's.
In pound.
Yes. There's not, so the SMRs might, although he says, he said the winds are behind them and in ten years, unless some, something politically changes, um, there's a possibility of having them in Wise County. Not necessarily in pound, but in Wise County in the next ten years or so. Is there any more discussion? Can we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Do we have a roll call vote of that, please?
Callthorne.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes. It'll adjourn.
Who's that cash, cash roll coming on my line?
Oh, okay.
Are you leaving? Are you getting out of here? I'm leaving.
There's always that.
So, do you get your new side by side or something?
Yeah.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Would you all get back?
Um, when it's one over, uh, I shot that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we put back, uh, I said, fuck it, I don't know. But I said, I don't, uh, we're, uh, over, uh.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you, Karen.
You catching on pretty quick, Miracle?
I think you will.
Okay.
Well, that's good, that's good. We've met some young clerks here, I think. And treasurers and stuff.